Issue because it does vary based on locality. And I think what you're going to see here is some presentations that talk about affordable housing study that has been conducted over the past year. And we're also going to talk a little bit about some of the things that we have been doing here in the county, as well as some proposed activities that we think would also help. Needless to say, it's a conversation that happens here. It also happens in the community. There are those that even build affordable housing that need to be brought into the conversation too, to see what it is that they need as part of this. So it's a team sport like any, and so I'll ask Kathy Pearson just to kind of moderate for us today.
But before we start, I'm getting contacted by people who have a copy of whatever's coming out here. And do any of you have anything? Because I have nothing.
We have a slide deck.
Where is the slide deck? Was it emailed to me? I have nothing. And I'm just really shocked that I got land use attorneys contacting me and I have not like, how do you know? I have nothing. So.
We can certainly present the slides and have them printed out right now for you, of course.
Yeah, that would be great. Because I'm a tactile person. I'd like to write notes on things.
Do you want to get your copies?
I'd say let's get going.
Yeah, get going, but if someone listening and they'll get us some hard copies of something.
Apologize for that. Kathy Pearson, Assistant County Administrator, Public Services. Welcome, Commissioner Yeager. It's great to have you onboard. So affordable housing, we, how did we get here? So David Lambert, as you probably all know, he is the Chair of the Pasco Housing Authority and also the Executive Vice President and General Manager with Lakouchi Electric and a wonderful partner of the county. We do a lot of projects with him. And occasionally David and I get together and we try to conquer the world and solve all people's problems. And affordable housing came up. And we both sat there and said, you know, we have never had an affordable housing plan for Pasco County. So David grabbed me and took me to his Pasco Housing Authority Board and convinced his board to pay for this study for us. So how wonderful is that, that they did that? And so then we partnered with Dr. Elizabeth Strom from the USF School of Public Affairs. We produced a scope of work and you're going to see the wonderful results today. And the preliminary research for this project was provided by nine graduate students in a class that they were called Fall, they took a Fall Affordable Housing Class. And believe it or not, three of them were employed by Pasco County getting their graduate programs. So we actually had three Pasco County students part of this study, so that was pretty cool. So you know, affordable housing, we've heard so many different terms, affordable housing, we've heard workforce housing, we've heard this, we've heard that. And generally it's defined as housing that costs no more than 30% of a household's income. And it's very essential to our economic stability. The more people spend on housing, the less money they spend on essentials like the food, the healthcare and the education that is needed. So like Mike said, today you're going to see the results of that study. That'll be presented by Dr. Elizabeth Strom. You're going to see Marcy Esberg, Director of Community Development, talk about some of the things that we have done in community development. And then we're going to bring in David Engel and David Goldstein, who are going to bring it in for a landing and maybe some suggestions of what we should, could be and what we should be doing. And I want to say thank you to this team. We had many conference calls and talks trying to put this PowerPoint together. And truly, I learned so much on going through this whole process and how important it is and for the housing. But before I bring Dr. Elizabeth Strom up, I would like to bring David Lambert up and have him share some of his thoughts on the affordable housing and thank him publicly for what they've done. So David, come on up.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Thank you all. When Kathy and I met, you know, as Chairman of the Housing Authority for the last 14 years, we have seen a significant issue with people being able to afford housing. So we started a program called Family Self-Sufficiency, so where the Housing Authority would put a portion of someone who was at the Housing Authority's rent in an escrow account and help them put a down payment on a house. This was after they went through all these financial courses and everything else and got very self-sustaining. And then we went to the market to try to find housing. There was none available that they could even afford in Pasco County. And I don't call it affordable housing. For me, it's workforce housing because these people, although they lived in a Pasco County Housing Authority community, worked every day. They were working in our county. They had a, we even worked with them, get them through all the courses and everything else and still could not afford a home. And when we went around and met with businesses and things like that, they were having a problem finding a workforce would actually work in the county and just couldn't afford to live here. So Kathy and I were having lunch one day and we said, you know, what is the county's affordable housing plan? And we didn't have one. So you know how things get muddled and everything else? We had done a Trilby-Lakouchi, Trilakouchi Strategic Master Plan, and we focused on that with the University of South Florida. And then I seen a plan and looked at plans from several other counties throughout the state. One, the University of Florida did, I think, for Marion County, places like that. And I said, you know, we need to have, take everybody else out of the equation and bring people in that are professional people to do, to analyze what we are looking to do and to present something to the county so the county could have a plan to go off of and adopt potentially. And it was great collaboration between the county, between the Housing Authority and stakeholders. We had multiple meetings with stakeholders, developers, land use attorneys, you name it, that work in Pasco County to get their input. So you know, this is, I believe, a good first step forward. I'd like to personally thank Dr. Strom and all the county folks that worked on this plan and Kathy and Community Development. We just were looking for something to try to give people in Pasco County, let's find a roadmap, a way forward, so we could address some of these issues. And everybody calls it one issue or another, but you know, I look at it as workforce housing, what people can, that need to do jobs here each and every day can afford to live in our county and work with. So that's the plan. And the Housing Authority was really gracious in doing this. That's because we have, we're in the same business of taking care of the people in Pasco County. And we wanted to see a plan that really worked for our citizens. And that's how we got here today. And welcome.
Thank you.
So thank you all for your time today, and I look forward to listening to Dr. Strom's presentation for the third time.
And David, David, 14 years serving the community on that board. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
It's really commendable.
One thing I'm proud of, y'all have it, June 17th, we're going to have a groundbreaking for our first veterans' housing complex in Pasco County. Family housing complex, and I'm proud to say half of those units will be for single veterans, which is a big part of our homeless population in Pasco County. That would not have happened without all of your staff working on it. I can remember when Commissioner Oakley and Commissioner Wells, Commissioner Mariano talked about getting our own veterans' family housing community. And we finally are going to have it. So thank you. And thank you Congressman Bill Rackets. He got us $4 million in the earmark.
Yeah.
That's good. Kathy, I'm going to say one thing as we're starting. I did find an agenda. I want to let everyone in, put on notice that everyone, all five Commissioners are present and that we're going forward with the workshops. Okay?
So if I could respectfully ask, we have, Dr. Elizabeth Strom's going to come up and present first. If we could hold the questions till the end, because it might be three or four slides later, those answers to some of those questions, that would be great. So Dr. Elizabeth Strom.
Okay. Welcome.
So first, I just want to thank you for giving me this opportunity and giving my students the opportunity to work with your wonderful staff. It's been a great experience for all of us. Now, my role today is largely to paint a broad picture of housing need and some approaches you might take to address it. We do have a written report, 70 or 80 pages, so that will have all the details that you could possibly want. But today I'm going more big picture and some of the, your staff, the Department has are going to fill in in a more granular, granular level. So I guess the good news is that Pasco County must be an amazing place to live. And I say that because people keep coming here. So that's the good news. The maybe not so good news is that it leads to rising housing costs. The increasing price of housing is felt everywhere, but certainly among renters, definitely among home buyers. But the ones who feel it most, as we'll discuss today, are those earning lower than average incomes. These residents are important members of your community. They're your healthcare workers, they're your cashiers, they're your teachers, they're even your county employees. And so it's important that we make sure that they are part of the county's future. Now, it's important to understand that improving the county's housing situation does not have one solution. You need to have a variety of tools in your policy toolbox, and you have to be creative in figuring out which tool best addresses which question. So for example, there are some tools that are great for incentivizing market rate housing. And so that's going to be less on the subsidy side and maybe more on the land use side. When it comes to serving people at 80% of the area median income or lower, AMI as we say, then probably just land use tools won't be enough. And that's when you need to have other kinds of subsidies and incentives to make, to make it pencil out for people at lower incomes. So to start, I want to make sure that we are all on the same page about what some of these terms mean. So as Kathy mentioned, when we talk about affordability, the federal definition for many, many decades has been that if you are paying more than 30% of your gross income for your housing costs, your housing is not affordable. You are considered cost burdened if you're paying over 30%. And so on this slide, you can see what affordable housing looks like based on different household incomes. Now, let me just clarify that to make this sort of a simple overview, I'm just doing averages of median incomes. So Marcy will provide a table that sort of breaks this down more by family size, but just on average, you can see what different income levels are, what you can afford to pay at that 30% affordability threshold. And so what income, what rent you could afford or housing costs you could afford based on that income. And what you'll see as we go along is that there's a disconnect between what people at 50 or 80% of AMI can pay and what people, what rents and housing costs actually are in the county. The next two slides further explore this concept of affordability as it applies to your residents. These slides are asking, who in Pasco County is cost burdened? In other words, who is paying more than 30% of their income for their housing? So if you look at this slide, which is about renters, you'll see that clearly those under 80% of AMI are the most affected. And the lower we go with income, then the more people are cost burdened. And so by far, the majority of Pasco County's cost burden population, which is the column on the right, are people who are earning 80% AMI or lower. That's, I think, 80, 84% or so of all cost burden folks or renters are in that category. And that doesn't change much when we look at homeowners. So homeowners also, while many people may be feeling a pinch if they're looking for housing now, those earning higher incomes are usually able to make it work in a somewhat affordable way. But lower income people here, even among homeowners, are squeezing their incomes to try to afford housing. I also wanted to take a brief look at who are the people earning these 80% AMI or lower wages? And so you can see that these are people, not just unskilled laborers, but also teachers and bank tellers and building inspectors. You know, I've often seen people talk about affordable housing as something undesirable, and the people who live in affordable housing are stigmatized. But all of us, every day, not only are encountering people, but are dependent on people who are at these income levels. And so I think it's important to make sure that they are included in any plans we have for housing in the county. And so this slide is a snapshot of, on average, what it costs to buy or rent today and who can afford it. Now, again, if you've lived in your residence for a longer period of time, you probably have much more affordable housing, your rent is lower, you bought it at much less, your interest rate was lower. But today, if you're looking for an apartment or looking for a house, these are the averages, and these are the incomes you need to be able to afford that average rent or that average home cost. Now, the next couple of slides are maps, and they address the question of where in the county do we find the greatest housing need? And so with some exceptions, our cost burden renters, and the slide is renters, tend to be concentrated on the eastern and western boundaries of the county, largely in and around the municipalities. So when you look at this map, you'll see the very dark red census tracts. In those census tracts, 75% or more of all renters are cost burdened. So like basically everyone is cost burdened in these census tracts. The dark orange, 50 to 75% of renter households are cost burdened. Still a very large number. So you can look at that map and sort of see geographically what we are talking about. Now, here's a map with cost burdened homeowners. You can see that they are more dispersed. And also, I want to point out that the scale on this map is different so that the, the dark red census tracts on this map, these are homeowners who are cost burdened, and the dark red means 30% or more of homeowners are cost burdened. Why are the scales so different? Just because on average, homeowners are more affluent and less likely to be cost burdened. So it's just a different scale of need. And then this map I've, I've put here because I think it's really interesting how much of a correlation there is between areas with older housing stock and areas where high levels of cost burden. Because what's that is showing you, because here again, the darker colors are older housing. And so what you see is that the areas where we've seen the most, the highest cost burden, biggest housing need are also the areas where the oldest housing stock is located. And so what that means, it's relevant to policy because it means your poorest households are living in the oldest, most in need of repair, most dilapidated housing. And you'll see that when we talk about policy, we will focus on that source of problem. If people's housing is in very poor shape, to the point where it becomes unlivable, then that decreases the amount of affordable housing available. Also, I want to note that this particular map, which is, there's like basically a dot for every property, this includes mobile homes. 17% of your housing units are mobile homes. And what I found interesting and somewhat surprising is that the vast majority, almost all of them, were built before 1994. Now, why is that significant? Because 1994 is when we see new, higher standards for mobile homes. So anything built prior to 1994 was built to an older standard. And that's what you have in terms of your mobile housing stock. Now, let's look ahead, because when we're talking about building housing and planning for housing, we're not talking about what are we doing for the need today, we're talking about what are we doing for the need tomorrow. So what does the future hold? There's always uncertainty when we plan for the future. We don't know exactly what will happen, but we can look at trends and project ahead with some confidence. So this slide is the projected employment, and it's Pasco and Hernando County together, but Hernando County is about 20% of this. So it's mostly Pasco. And what you can see looking to 2030, I've put here the 10 fastest growing job titles and the wages associated with them. And so some of these faster growing areas are fairly high wage, but the majority of them are low wage jobs in retail and, you know, waitstaff and lawn service and that sort of thing. And so what that means is that a lower income group will be here in the decade to come. And I know that you are all working very hard to bring in higher value employers, employers like Moffett. But even when you're bringing in a Moffett, for every MD and PhD they hire, there will be three to five support workers who make a lot less than the MDs and the PhDs, and they need to live here too. And then also, this is sort of consistent to what we see when we get data from the University of Florida Schimberg Center. This is looking at cost burden, looking ahead to 2050. The top row is projections for percentage of renters that will be cost burdened, and you can see that remains in the 40 to 50% range. And the bottom row are homeowners, and we're looking at between a quarter and one-fifth of homeowners likely to be cost burdened if current conditions continue looking ahead to 2050. So what else do we see when we look ahead? This is probably not a surprise to you because your, your planners tell you this all the time, but your population will keep growing. And so looking at these projections, it looks like you're going to gain a couple of 100,000 people in the next couple of decades, and they need to live somewhere. And so if we assume two to three people per household, so if you're gaining 200,000 individuals, you're looking at 80,000 or 90,000 new housing units you need. Now, that's over a long period of time, but don't forget, that's just to house the newcomers. We still have the deficit of housing for lower income people that exist today, and we still have older housing that could be going into disrepair that needs to be replaced. So that's a lot of new housing. And if we're looking ahead to, let's say, 2040, you know, the planning for that starts today.
Did you?
Yes.
No, we're supposed to hold off on questions.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll write it down for them.
Okay. So now we get to policy. So what approach can the county take to address some of these deficits? Now, as I said to start, I wish I could say, it's like you do this one thing and housing problems go away. But housing is super complex. You all know that. So it's a multifaceted approach, and I'm just going to give sort of headlines of a couple of strategic areas that I think are good to look at. And, and don't worry if I'm going quickly because I'm going to go in through each of these bullet points. So the first sort of gets at what we had talked about a little bit before with the age of housing and which lower income people live. And that is making sure that we retain the affordable housing stock that we have. So part of that is going to be sort of market-based affordable housing. Sometimes in the field, it's called naturally occurring affordable housing. In other words, it's not subsidized, it's not rent restricted, it just happens to be lower cost. And so to maintain that housing supply, which is where most low income people live, we need to look at rehab and other ways that people stay housed, even if they encounter some kind of financial difficulty. Now, the county already has a homeowner's rehab program and also has a program to help people out if they are in tax arrears. And so that, you don't need to reinvent the wheel, but I think those programs should be serving more people. I think they should be broader and should be more robust, even perhaps consider, let's say, helping people with homeowner's insurance, which these days may be more than their property taxes. And so helping people pay their homeowner's insurance could mean that they're able to maintain their homes even if a storm comes. And the other thing I think we need to do regarding affordable housing maintenance is making sure that the current assisted housing stock you have remains affordable and habitable. So as most of you know, when you have assisted housing, it's usually funded by the state or the federal government. There's some kind of a contract that runs several decades that says, we will give you a subsidy and you will keep rents low. Well, those contracts end. And so you have housing that was built 10, 20, 30 years ago where the contracts are going to expire. And so to make sure that those remain affordable and remain in good enough condition to be habitable, it often takes some local government action to make that happen. You don't want to have affordable housing kind of dropping out the bottom as you're trying to put more in on the top. So the other thing I think is sometimes we just need to give money to people. And you already do this because you have a down payment assistance program, and that's to help homeowners who qualify buy a home. So we're suggesting expanding that, thinking about different ways to make it more accessible to more people. Considering the rapid increase in the price of a typical starter home, it may be that the limits you have on it now are just not realistic. And so those are things that we've discussed. The other thing I wanted to mention is rental assistance. During the pandemic, then you used the federal ERAP program to provide rental assistance. You worked with nonprofit partners to do that, and that kept people from being evicted. So those particular federal funds are gone, but there's other federal funds that could be used for that. Now, not everyone is wild about the idea of handing people money because they didn't pay their rent. But let me just point out that sometimes people are getting evicted because they had, you know, lower hours one, one month and couldn't pay a month's rent. And so over $800 or $1,000, they're getting evicted. So when you think about it in terms of being cost effective, sometimes paying two months' rent means that the landlord's not incurring expensive court costs, a family is not ending up having to move in a sort of a forced way. And if that family were to end up homeless, you're not spending $2,000 on them, you're spending $20,000 and more. So a well-targeted emergency rental aid program can in fact be a cost effective use of money. Now, also, you don't have to be an economist to know about supply and demand affecting the cost of things. So right now, you have a short supply of housing, at least at certain price points. And so that means that the costs of housing are going to go up as your population increases. And so it's important to make sure that we always have our eyes on the prize, which is building more housing. And that means making sure housing can be built at every price point. Now, building for people at over 100% of income or 120% of AMI, that doesn't require subsidies, but it may require some other policies I'll get to in a sec. But building for people who earn 80% of AMI or less usually requires some kind of subsidy. And so incentives like waivers or bonuses can help bridge the gap between what people can pay and what a developer will tell you is important for them, is what they need to make, to make something work. And that gets me to my next point, which is one of the things that's really key to any kind of local housing policy is using land strategically. We are not making more land. We have what we have. And so we need to make sure that what land we have that is in any way appropriate for affordable housing or for housing is used for that purpose. Also, you all have amazing amounts of open space and recreation space. You don't want to give that away. You also have agricultural land. You don't want to give that away. And so what that means is that the land you have that is possible for building needs to be used really efficiently. So one thing that I mentioned is thinking about surplus public land. You know, the county may have land, I know you don't have CRAs, but municipalities do. School district, there are a lot of local and state agencies that hold land that can be declared surplus. And when you use surplus land to, to sort of have RFPs to build affordable housing, it's great for the county because you have a lot of sway over what gets built there. You have a lot of carrots and sticks you can use when it's your land, and that can make sure that the projects are affordable. And so I would encourage you to look closely at what land could be deemed surplus and then to look at mechanisms like community land trusts or land banks as ways to hold and manage housing. But perhaps even more importantly is the other part of using land efficiently is thinking about zoning. And you, you know, regulations are important. We don't want people to, you know, build in wetlands and all that, but we don't want to have regulations that unreasonably prevent us from building housing. And you are not likely to meet all of your housing and affordability goals if the only thing you can build in Pasco County is a detached, single-family home. You just won't get to the number of units you need at the price point you need. And so there are ways to introduce greater density, and I know density can be a scary word in many situations, but it doesn't have to be scary in practice. You don't have to look like Miami Beach or Manhattan to have greater density. So you may have heard terms like missing middle or gentle density, and these refer to housing types like accessory dwelling units or ADUs, duplexes and triplexes that can be integrated into a single-family home neighborhood without changing the neighborhood's character. But to get housing at scale, you still need more multifamily housing. And so you especially need that around areas that are convenient transportation routes and near employment centers. You do not want a situation where your lower wage workforce has to commute 45 minutes from three counties over. You want them here. And so to, to do this, you need to think about where you can accommodate more density because denser housing with smaller footprints is always going to be less expensive. If large-scale upzoning is not realistic, then at least think about density bonuses, which you can use and negotiate for affordable housing units in exchange for those bonuses. And finally, of course, scaling up your housing policies requires that you have the appropriate partnerships and staff capacity to carry out new and expanded programs. You can build on existing partnerships with housing nonprofits. You can develop new collaborations. I've heard others like David Lambert mentioned, talking to employers. Employers have a huge interest in affordable housing. If I'm the CEO of a hospital, I need to have people who don't earn a ton of money, and they need to be working around the clock. And so I need to have them living nearby so that they can get to their midnight shift. And so working with these employers to see what they might have available in terms of surplus land or resources or simply support that they can give in various ways. Also, we're talking about making programs more robust and expanding programs, and of course, you need to make sure that you have the staff in place that can handle those new responsibilities and that there's training for existing staff so they can take on new tasks, if that is indeed what is required. And so to conclude, the goal is a healthy housing market. We want housing options for the doctor and the home health aide, for the CEO and the receptionist, and there are multiple tools and strategies the county can use to get there. Thank you very much. Do you want to, do you want me to take questions now? Okay, so I'll stay here for your questions.
Ms. Strom.
Yes, I wrote it down. When you said we were 80,000, we were in need of 80,000 units, is that above and When you said we were 80,000, we were in need of 80,000 units, is that above and beyond what we've may not, what we've encumbered but maybe haven't pulled permits? I mean, we-
No, it's not. I'm just looking at the population projection and saying that 200,000 people are going to need 80,000 units. So there may, if you've already permitted 80,000 units, then, you know, that takes you part of the way there.
Well, we may not have permitted them, but we may have given them approvals to move forward. What's the right planning order? Entitlement.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
I would wonder how many entitlements we have out there that are potential.
That would be a question for your planning department, I think?
Eight hundred thousand.
Let me say that some of them may be potential, but most of those units are not restricted to be affordable.
No, no, yeah. But she didn't say we need 80,000 affordable units.
But just to accommodate new incomers, you would need about 80,000 to 90,000 new units.
We don't, we don't have enough.
I just wondered if that was above and beyond what we've entitled, but it sounds like it isn't. So, but thank you, I loved your presentation, yeah. I'm looking for some quadruplexes that I just saw up in Louisville when we get to us talking, so.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, the fact is when you look at really well-designed quadruplexes and ADUs, I mean, they look great, nobody would say, oh my God, I don't want that in my neighborhood.
Yeah. You didn't, you didn't mention the word ADU?
You know what, I skipped over something where I had meant to mention it. So I did want to mention that a lot of your neighboring counties and municipalities have recently permitted ADUs. You all have that just in very few master-planned areas where people can have like an apartment or a garage, but county-wide, we can't have, you can't build an ADU.
Yeah, I've been asking and asking and asking, and I think it's in the works, but for a couple of years, I've been-
Starkey, we're going to cover that later in the presentation.
Yeah, but anyway, yeah, I think St. Pete, City of Tampa, and some other counties have now included that, and they have a different range of regulations about size and appearance and all these things to make it more consistent with the neighborhoods they're in.
I think you find out in Pasco, most of the houses, new homes being built are way over $300,000. I mean, they're 400,000, 500,000, and not affordable for most people. I mean, it takes two breadwinners working in a home, bringing in good pay to be able to afford one of those houses.
Absolutely.
So we, we need a lot of housing that is affordable for our workers that are coming in. For jobs we're bringing in all over the county, we don't have the housing for them yet, but we have to be, and that's why we're having this meeting, because we know we need workforce housing, so.
Thank you, Chairman.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Strom. So we're going to bring Marcy Esberg up, and then followed Marcy will be the two Davids, David Engel and David Goldstein, so.
Okay. Welcome, Marcy.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. For the record, Marcy Esberg, Director of Community Development, and I'm going to take it from the point of the things that we are doing currently with the limited resources that we have, and then we'll go on to take some of the suggestions that Dr. Strom came up with from the report as a way of suggesting a way forward for our community. So the, Dr. Strom ended with looking for a healthy housing market, and really what we're all looking for is a place where every person in Pasco County can live, work, and play here. And so I like to always start with this slide, which comes from the University of Florida Schimberg Institute. And I like how the fact that the last time we were talking so much about University of Florida and another name, there was all this competition, that was at the tourism banquet. But I like how the USF and Schimberg Institute, UFA, have worked together and really providing really good information for us. And this slide talks about the housing types that we need for the market, and what we are primarily looking at are subsidized housing that's below 80% of the median income. So we start off on the left-hand side with supportive housing, and those could be affordable units, but also the type of wraparound services to help people stay housed. These could be people that have been experiencing homelessness, older adults, people with disabilities or special needs. So we want them to be housed, it's healthier for them, it's less expensive for our community for them to be housed, but in order for them to stay housed, they need services along with their housing. From there, we move into the affordable rental housing, and we heard a lot about the statistics of what type of rental housing we needed and the cost burden. Rental housing could include housing from the public housing units, also the units that are subsidized through Florida Housing, the Department of Housing and Urban Development, USDA, and then vouchers that come from the housing authority, and as mentioned earlier, the naturally occurring affordable housing, which could be housing that some of us right here in our, in, right here today are living in. And then we go into, in our continuum, affordable home ownership, and we started with David Lambert talking about the Family Self-Sufficiency Program and how those people were looking to buy homes and they couldn't find homes to buy. So what do we need in our community for that affordable home ownership? And it could be something like a community land trust, but it could also be the programs that we're already doing, like down payment assistance, low-interest loans, affordable construction, like our work that we do with Habitat for Humanities and Home Rehab and Weatherization. So we are doing a number of things in the county with our limited resources. And for those of you that maybe not know, that our department is completely grant-funded, and I'm going to do just an overview of the funds that come in to the county, to our department, and I'm going to specifically focus on how we use these funds for housing. So there's sometimes, there's other uses for them, but today, we're just going to talk about housing. So the Community Development Block Grant, the Home Investment Partnership, and the Emergency Solutions Grant are the three grants that come from the Department of Housing and Urban Development, and that's because we are an entitlement community. So Pasco County gets these grants every year.
And why, why are we in entitlement community?
Because we have over 500,000 people, a certain amount of low-income people, and the age of our housing.
We've earned it.
We've earned it. So for CDBG, we get about $3 million a year plus a little bit of program income. And in addition to public services, we can do some affordable housing activities. Oddly enough, we cannot build housing with CDBG, but we can buy housing, we could buy land, we could clear land and get it ready for housing, and we could do access modifications or infrastructure. An example of this is, those of you that know, that Vincent House, we helped them build the beautiful facility that they have there, and now they're getting ready to build 39 units of affordable housing for their members, and we put $1.1 million of infrastructure money in so that they could be prepared to build. So we could do that with CDBG. Our home money is strictly for housing. So we could build new housing, we could renovate housing, we could do homeownership, we could do rental housing. We get a little over $1 million a year from that program. And then for the Emergency Solutions Grant, that is strictly for people experiencing homelessness. You see, we only get $250,000. Hard to build anything for $250,000, but we can do rental assistance with that money. And we could also do temporary shelter with that money. The biggest pot of money that we have for affordable housing is using our state funding, which is the State Housing Initiative Partnership, or SHIP. And this coming year, we're getting $4.6 million from the state for this. Since I've been here, we had a year where we got no money for this and one for $700,000 and $900,000. So it's only been the last two years that that amount has gone up. But again, this is strictly for housing, and again, we could do a myriad of activities. We could do new construction, we could do single-family, we could do multifamily, we could do rehabilitation, we could do rental housing new. The key with SHIP is there's a lot of pockets that we have to do. So we have to do a certain amount for homeownership, a certain amount of construction, so sometimes that limits us. All of these funds are used to build or to do affordable housing, and it's all strictly by income. So people will often call me and say, do I qualify for this? And this is the chart that we use. So if you were to look at this chart and say, person, one-person household, if they earned $53,500 or less, that would be 80% of the median income, and everything is adjusted for household size. So a family of four would be 76,400. It really depends on the household size. And it, this amount changes every year right around April or May, so that's the newest cost, income cost. So now, I, what I did was I took the report that Dr. Strom gave us, and I basically are, I'm going to tell you some of the things that we are already doing and that we can do based on her recommendations. So we work very hard in preserving our current housing stock. And so with our SHIP funding, we do owner-occupied renovation, and we run about 40 of those a year. We could do anything from roof repairs, new roofs, new AC units, access modifications, we put new showers, we put new kitchens, replace flooring, so we do a number of owner-occupied rehabs. We help, as was mentioned, people stay in their homes by paying their taxes if they are behind in taxes. We do rental assistance for special needs, and we can do rental rehab for developers and not-for-profits. With CDBG and home, we can do acquisition and/or rehab, again, to keep the housing stock we have, to preserve them. That's, that's how we use the funding. But we could also do more. In the report, Dr. Strom talks about doing an assessment of our housing conditions, and that is something that we can do in our, with our team. She also suggests that we can extend our, our SHIP requirements so we could help more people. So we can do that with raising the assessed home value and also raising the amount of money that we can give. The other thing that we're looking to do is everything in our office is done through loans. So those years when we got no money, or $700,000 or $900,000, we were getting also paybacks from people who, who previous years, maybe 10 years ago, 15 years ago, benefited for those programs. That money helped keep the whole team hired and employed, but also helped us to continue to help new people. So generally speaking, everything is done that way, but we can go into a program where we offer grants or forgivable loans to special populations, especially those on fixed income, like those that are elderly and disabled. And then one, one thing that was mentioned earlier was the mobile homes in our county. So with our SHIP funds, we can only help mobile homes that are built after 1994. I will tell you that at least once a week, if not more than that, we get a call from somebody in one of our mobile homes looking for assistance because of their roof, because of their AC unit, and we can't do it. So one of the things that we're hoping to do is to start a program with our CDBG money to help those that are in mobile homes that are under, that are, that are older than 1994, and those could be over 21,000 homes. So that's what we could do to preserve our stock. Now, let's look at how we could work with or what we do with assisted housing stock. So currently, we have partnered a number of times with the Pasco County Housing Authority. So if they need renovations in their properties, we use those grant funds to do that kind of renovation. That leaves their money to be used in other instances. But what we can do, and I've seen this in other communities, is when we have those assisted units, and according to the report, we have just under 5,000 assisted units in the county, when they, when their contract for affordability becomes close to being due, we can go in with those grant funds and purchase those units, or purchase those units with one of our nonprofit partners so that they continue to be affordable. And that's really important because when we get into the type of housing market that we're in where it's really hot, those, those units go market rate, and I've seen that in communities, I've seen them go condo.
Can you say that again?
So there are assisted units that are in our county, about 5,000 of them, and that means they have federal or state money in them. But when that, when they got that money, they were told they need to stay affordable for X number of years. That X number comes due, and at that point, those units can go market rate, they could sell them to be condo, but we could come in and purchase them, and we could use that, we could use those grant funds to do that and keep them in our affordable housing stock. So I'd like to tell you that we're doing a lot for affordable housing. It's not enough, but we are doing some really good things. On the left-hand side, you could see, and I just went back to, since I've been here in October, it'll be six years, so I didn't take the whole history of this department. But in the past six years, we built 110 units of affordable housing in Dade City, 30 units in Newport Ritchie, another five in Newport Ritchie. We purchased Rosalie Rendu, which was a multifamily, small multifamily, units, and we turned them into permanent supportive housing beds for the homeless. And just recently, finished leasing up 88 units of affordable rental housing in Tannager Square, which is right off of Old 54. That is a low-income housing tax credit project. But look what's happening on the right-hand side, and that comes to over 800 units of affordable housing that's in the pipeline, including our Veterans Project with the Housing Authority, June 17th? June 17th, 77 units of rental housing. Spear Village is going from five to 50 units. Ozanum Four is going to be 33 units of affordable one-bedrooms for people experiencing homelessness. The Vincent House housing I mentioned, and then the two Dominion Projects that you all are familiar with, one in Newport Ritchie is a senior housing of 300 units, and Kobea Cove in the Anclot is 225 units of family housing. And then lastly, just recently approved as a low-income housing tax credit, Echos at Banet Point, which is 114 units of senior housing in Hudson. So we've got a lot of good things happening, we're well on our way, but we definitely need more things to do. So what can we do to build more affordable housing? One of the suggestions is to work with development services under your direction to identify the land that is suitable for missing middle and multifamily projects. We can take the funding that we have, which is SHIP funding and home funding, we usually put that out to request for proposals, and you can decide on some new incentives, and along with your incentives, we can add money to it. So you have the incentive and you have the funding. That's a nice pairing that doesn't often happen. And then we, we are doing this, and we will continue to attend all the pre-app meetings our, our team does, myself or Jeff McKittrick, our Assistant Director, and I think sometimes we feel a little bit like used car salesmen, but we're always pitching the idea of affordable housing to all the developers that are coming through on their pre-app meetings. So that's what we're doing. Now, let's make this a little bit more granular, granular. I don't know if I said that right.
Granular.
Granular, thank you. And I think this will really hit home for you all. I want to thank the HR Department for this information, and just thank all the county departments. We really all work together, it was a great team effort. So the, the question is, how much can a Pasco County employee afford to pay for housing each month? Okay, so these are my fellow employees that are working here for you and I together. So we have, on the first column, 92 full-time employees that earn less than $2,800 a month, and these are divided- And these are divided up into basically fifty percent of the median income, middle is eighty percent of the median income, and then in the right-hand side, a hundred percent of the median income. So that's kind of how we group these. So you've got ninety-two full-time employees, your library assistants, customer service specialists, equipment operator trainees, custodian, animal care techs, park rangers, park attendants. Okay, and, and they're coming from all different branches, right? Uh, ninety-two of them that can afford between five hundred and eighty, eight-hundred and thirty-five dollars a month. Then we have those that are at eighty percent of the median income, earning between twenty-eight hundred and four thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars a month. Almost fifteen hundred employees. Your firefighters, EMTs, bus drivers, project coordinators, again, library associates, admin secretaries, equipment operators, utility workers. All earning, um, uh, eighty percent of the median income. They could afford less than thirteen, about thirteen-hundred and thirty-seven dollars a month rent. And then we have at our hundred percent of AMI, those are a thousand and seventy employees. Uh, our corrections officer, paramedic, field inspector, plant operators, planner too, program coordinators, they could afford up to eighteen-hundred and thirty-eight dollars a month rent. So the bottom line is forty-three percent of the county employees can only afford less than thirteen-thirty-seven a month, or they, they all qualify as eighty percent or less of the median income. So how does that translate to our rental market? Uh, we just, I just went across, used Zillow, Realtor.com, and on the top line, uh, going right across the county, what is an average one-bedroom in Newport Ritchie? You know, from the last time I did this, they actually went down just slightly. Uh, but you're looking at nine-thirty-five to twelve-twenty-five a month. Land of Lakes, it goes from thirteen-thirty to fifteen-hundred. Dade City, fourteen-hundred to sixteen-hundred. Wesley Chapel, up to eighteen-hundred, and Zephyr Hills, fourteen to eighteen-hundred. Well, if you flip back and you remember, that is, uh, a lot of people, uh, in our, that we work with cannot afford, uh, to live anywhere except for in a one-bedroom apartment in Newport Ritchie. So if you look at the middle one, again, that's, uh, the fifty, eighty, a hundred, and a hundred and twenty percent of the median income. And then in the last line, uh, just taking the information from Dr. Strom's report, uh, not just our, uh, county employees, but having, uh, just under eighteen thousand cost-burden Pasco households at fifty percent of the median income. Ten thousand at eighty percent of the median income. So that's twenty-eight thousand, under eighty percent of the median income. And then the, uh, the numbers go down as the median income increases. So I hope that this information, uh, helps you to see, uh, not only, uh, the need, uh, but also how this impacts, uh, the people that we work with every day. Uh, next, we're going, dwell, let me see, does anybody have any questions?
Yes, Ms. Starkey?
Let me start my first one. Um, on the CDBG, or whichever one of those groups of money that you said we have, um, how do we, oh, you and I talked, when our family was gonna do a build-to-rent, um, we were gonna work, try and work with the developer or builder to buy down a cost of a house for someone to rent. Um, so can you do that in a regular, in any of our build-to-rent neighborhoods? We could come in and help subsidize one of those houses?
Sure.
And I really think we should try and get some of those. Um, and we need to talk to some of our development community about participating with us. I'm sorry, my, my build-to-rent community went away because the funding went away. So I wanted to be the guinea pig in the county. Um, but it's, it's, it's somewhat easy to do when you're doing a rental community under one management, because you have a rental office, because you have to income-qualify whoever's running those houses.
Right.
But that seems like the low-hanging fruit, to me, that we could come in and buy down some of their costs and put them into a rental pool that's managed by that company.
Yeah, we could do that.
Okay, um, uh, when you're talking about all the ship and CDBG funds, does this include all our cities? Do we manage it for every, everybody in the county?
We manage it for everybody but Newport Ritchie. They opted out.
And why's that?
Because they, uh, thought that they could get more money directly from the state and manage it themselves.
Is that by working out for them?
You'll need to ask them.
Okay, I don't know, maybe, maybe not. But I, I will say, I've driven around Newport Ritchie a lot, and they've got triplexes, quadplexes, all tucked in in all their streets. All mixed in with single-family, and just seamlessly mixed in. Um, okay, another question. Um, okay, on your, when you did that list of completed projects, I didn't notice the one that's behind the McDonald's, I think it is, or behind the, um, southeastern, southeast, uh, it's that big tower with, where they...
The Dorland?
It's on the west side of Nineteen, and it's a, it's a, it's a workforce housing project. It's really nice. Anyone who went on my drive-through before you were commissioners, I took you to see that low, that low-income project that is right next to an old, like, Section Eight income project.
It, it might have been before, six years before my time, maybe that's it.
Yeah, 'cause it, we, we have a beautiful one there.
It's right off of Nineteen.
It's right off of Nineteen, kind of by Southeast Personnel Leasing.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't go all the way back.
Okay, it's got, um, maybe two-hundred-and-fifty, three-hundred units in there? And it has a range of AMIs, it has...
Is it Park Place?
I don't remember the name, I'll pull it up, but I wanna make sure you add that to your list. Uh, but they, they participated in the state lottery, and they got some money. All right, let me see if there's another question.
Any other question?
Nope, that's it. On what you've done so far.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Marcy.
Oh, this is Tag Team?
It is.
Yes.
They do, they do. So, Marcy's doing a fantastic job, um, but she's got limited resources. And so, well, David and I said, okay, what can we do on a going-forward basis with kind of some of the low-hanging fruit that we can do to eat into this deficit? And we still have a deficit. If you remember, I showed you the Schimberg numbers report before, in the below-eighty percent range, we clearly still have a deficit. So, we thought, David and I put our heads together, um, he's a little more higher than me. Um, but, um, and we tried to come up with some kind of quick things that we could work on to, to start the ball rolling on addressing this deficit. One of them you've already done. So, this was kind of our carrot approach to Live Local. We did this last year. We, we reduced our mobility and impact fees for affordable housing. We created a hundred percent reduction for housing below eighty percent of AMI. And a seventy-five percent reduction for nonprofits that are below a hundred and twenty. So, the reason for that second one is you might have a nonprofit-like habitat that's doing primarily eighty percent, but they may have a few homes that are in the eighty to one-hundred range, and we didn't want them to not get some kind of benefit for, for providing that housing. It's less of a need, but there's still a little bit of a need in the eighty to one-hundred range. Um, however, that one's important because we made it clear that you can't do that. We won't give those reductions if you invoke Live Local. So that one's already done, um, that's the easy one. Second easiest one, this is the one that you wanna talk about, Commissioner Starkey, Commissioner Oriana, you raised this as well, ADUs. Um, I do think this is probably the easiest thing for us to accomplish very, fairly quickly. Um, we probably have about, as Elizabeth mentioned, about seven or eight MPUDs currently that allow for accessory dwelling units, but it's really only allowed in MPUDs. So Commissioner Starkey texted me at the last planning commissioner meeting and said...
I did, I've been bringing that up.
And said, why don't, why aren't we allowing an ADU on that, on that lot?
Five acres. He wanted to build a home for, he wanted his parents to be able to live on his five acres.
And so my answer to her was, well, we have to legalize ADUs on other, on these kinds of lots, which we currently don't have. So, I do think this one is fairly easy. Um, it's just simply a matter of amending our zoning code to allow these ADUs. We, we already have standards that we came up with the MPUDs in terms of how they generally have to be subordinate to the principal structure. Um, but those standards are fairly easy to put into the code. So, I think this one is something I'm guessing we could do in the next six months.
Is it tied to the original house there? Is it tied to...
Yeah, you need to have a principal building...
Right.
Before you can have an accessory dwelling unit. But, and generally, the accessory dwelling unit tends to be a smaller unit...
Yes.
Than the principal building. And so, in the MPUDs that we've approved, we have required that it be a smaller structure than the principal building.
Right.
And there may be some really small lots, you know, I can't guarantee you that every forty-foot lot you've approved, you can fit an ADU.
Yeah, I'm not sure about that.
You may or may not be able to, but most of our lots in the county are not forty-foot lots. They're, they're larger lots, and so I suspect that they could fit ADUs on them. The one that Commissioner Starkey texted me about clearly could have fit an ADU.
Five acres.
Um, so I think this one's fairly easy to do, and many other jurisdictions have done it. I know it was fairly successful in California. They had a lot of ADU permits when they loosened up the regulations to allow ADUs. So, I think this one could be done fairly quickly, and it's an easy, easy way to increase the supply of housing. The next one, um...
Do we have a lot of calls for that, that type?
Uh, ADUs? I don't know how many we're getting currently.
I do see it a lot in BCS, that's one thing that we do reject, particularly in the larger-sized acres, they maybe wanna bring another structure in.
Right, okay.
Um, and if you drive through Longleaf, if you go through, you won't, you won't notice them on the main streets, but if you go through the alleys, there's quite a few ADUs in there. Yeah. And some people use them just for when their kids are visiting from out of town, but some people, um, rent them out. I, one, we, we, one of my aides has, has a one-bedroom that she...
I can't see you putting them on forty-foot lots, 'cause you can hardly put a lot more on forty-foot lots.
Well, if it's rear-loaded, it's, that's a different story, because you have a garage in the back and a separate access above the garage.
Okay, I think the thought would be to allow them county-wide, but there may be some lots that they're just too small to allow them.
Right, yeah.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, at the, at the summit meeting they had for housing, um, it was very popular in California, but it didn't start out that way, 'cause it had so many restrictions.
Yeah.
So I think we need to look at what California did at first, find out how they throttled back, and then maybe to take a look some other areas and, and bring back. It could be, it could be a whole separate meeting, I think, a presentation on just that alone. But there is some great opportunity that you could help a lot of, let's say, seniors that may have a home, or if a poor family's got a home, that want to either bring a parent back, or bring a parent out of, out of a place, or a child that wants to stay by. So there's a lot of opportunity, but I think we'll, I would take a look and see what others have done.
Yeah, we'll look at what California did. But I think, my understanding is, in California, they started fairly restrictive, but then they loosened it up, and then they got a lot more ADU permits. So, um, we'll use that as a starting point, but we wanna get moving on that one fairly quickly. I know David Engel has expressed an interest in getting that one moving pretty quickly. Um, the next one requires a little more effort, and that's what Elizabeth referred to as gentle density, or kind of infill density. And it's basically the concept of allowing single-family homes to convert to duplexes, quadplexes. Now, this is one clearly, you're not gonna get a quadriplex on a forty-foot lot, okay? But there could be areas of the county where you've got larger lots, where the conversion of a single-family home to duplex or quadriplex could work. But this one requires a little more study, because you gotta make sure you've got the right lot sizes. You wanna make sure there's adequate infrastructure to support that, the conversion of single-family homes to, to quadriplexes or duplexes. So, that one's gonna require a little more study on our part. That's why we wanna start with ADUs, 'cause that'll kind of be the trial balloon to see how that's working. But we think the next step would be to allow, start allowing more duplexes, quadriplexes in some of the single-family neighborhoods. The last one I wanna cover probably requires the most work, um, and that's inclusion Arizona and linkage fees. So, David actually started this. Um, he, he actually had a few projects where he said, hey, if you're gonna be increasing density, you should be set aside some of those units for affordable housing. And so, he started it, but then Live Local kind of derailed that effort. So he kind of tabled it. Um, but the concept is basically, when you're approving a new development, you're allowing additional density, or even non-residential development, that you require that development to set aside a certain percentage of their units to be affordable housing. Um, typically, these regulations require you to have a fee in lieu. So if the developer says, I don't wanna provide affordable housing, at least they have a way of sort of buying out of the, the mandatory requirement, so they can pay a fee in lieu of that, which then Marcy can use to help provide affordable housing, housing projects elsewhere. Um, it can apply to both residential and non-residential, and I think David Engel will tell you that it's kind of important to also look at non-residential too, because a McDonald's is generating the need for affordable housing. I mean, it's, it's generating low-wage workers that need affordable housing. So, it's, it's something you probably need to look at, both from a residential and non-resi, non-residential standpoint. I would do wanna point out that we actually used to have a requirement like this in the county. Wiregrass, actually, the Wiregrass DRI, and there were a few others, actually, the Starkey DRI had it originally. Um, the UPH had it, Central Pasco Employment Village, they all had affordable housing requirements similar to what I'm talking about. The problem we had was that, at least in Wiregrass, we said, we're gonna pursue something county-wide. Well, we never did. And so Wiregrass said, you never pursued what you said you were going to do, so we want out of the requirement, because we're the only ones doing it. And I agree with Wiregrass, it's not fair if they're the only ones...
Right.
That are subject to this requirement. Affordable housing is a community-wide need, and so Wiregrass shouldn't be the only one that's having to deal with that need. So, I think if we did something on a county-wide basis, it would be more equitable instead of just targeting projects here and there.
David?
Yes.
And can we go back to, um, the DRI days? When, when we had DRIs, River Ridge was a DRI. Um, we have a lot of developments with DRIs, and when, ten percent of the housing in a DRI had to be affordable.
And that, that was the origin, it actually originated because Tampa Bay Regional Planning Council, as part of the DRI process, was saying, was pushing for us to have a certain percentage of housing that was affordable.
There was a nine-J-two rule that required it for a while, yeah.
Yeah.
So, so yes, so yes, so that's why the larger projects, like the Wiregrasses, the Starkey DRI, and others had that requirement. But when we didn't do it county-wide, then they also, why are we the only ones having to, to deal with this problem? And I tended to agree with them. Why, why are we singling out just a few large projects and saying, you're the only ones that are responsible for dealing with affordable housing, when it's really a community-wide need? So the thought process of this is that it would be a community-wide program. We have, now, there is a statutory requirement that you offset the costs of that housing to the developers. So you have to create other incentives, whether it's additional density, some of the impact fee waivers we talked about. You have to give them other incentives to offset that additional cost. And so, that's something that we've already started looking at. We actually prepared a scope that we sent to the Affordable Housing Coalition. I think they've given us a price already to do that work. Um, so we wanna start that initiative as well. That one's gonna take a little more time, because that's not an easy program to do, because you've gotta do that analysis about how you're offsetting the costs, and come up with the right fees in lieu, and so it's, that one's gonna take a little more time, and so...
I think that's a good direction for us to go.
Yeah, so...
Be looking to that.
We, I, I personally think so too. I mean, to me, I view affordable housing like any other piece of infrastructure. I mean, it's like parks, and libraries, and roads, and fire stations. It's a, it's a needed piece of infrastructure. And so, it's not to say the development committee's gonna fully solve the problem, but they should be part of the solution. In other words, use what we do with this, combine that with some of the money that Marcy's talking about. I think we can come up with a comprehensive program that actually addresses our affordable housing needs. But there, there's no one silver bullet when it comes to affordable housing. That's why we're giving you multiple strategies, so that we're not putting the burden on any one particular group to solve that problem.
And I think the avenue, the avenue going out to, the whole county is, is looking at it. Everybody has to do that. Um, we got, we've had, I've been in office now, I'm in my eighth year, so I've been here seven years. And we've had to look at not having an affordable housing the entire time I've been here. I always feel like we need, there's forty percent of our workforce, forty percent of all of our citizens that need affordable housing, and we need to do something about it. And we can't just keep turning our backs to it. We need to take care of that. And that will be a start, but then we need to figure out other projects that will come along at the same time.
The other reason I think this is important is we saw what happened with Live Local. Not a good way of attacking this issue, we all agree on that. But, there's still a need. We know there's still a need in that below the eighty percent range. So, if the legislature's not gonna solve the problem, I think we need to take steps to solve the problem, so we can help ourselves, and we're not getting a top-down mandate to try to solve this problem.
We have people that haven't even moved here yet that need affordable housing. I mean, they wanna be here, but they're not here.
I think Elizabeth pretty much told you that, that you're gonna have a lot of new...
Yeah, that's correct.
Lower-wage workers.
Her number was forty-three percent.
Well, just look at schoolteachers. Schoolteachers were in the group that need affordable housing, and we're not, we're not providing it currently.
Sure.
Yes, sir.
Like, we're talking a lot about rental, right. There's different...
Mm, I wasn't talking about rental.
Well, there's a lot...
Well, okay, to be clear, the, the need below eighty percent of AMI is there whether it's rental or
Yeah.
or homeownership, we, we need both. I don't think anybody's suggesting, I don't think any of the party speakers suggested that, that the need can only be met with rental.
And Commissioner Ross is going to speak to that in a moment.
Oh, okay.
Hi, uh, welcome, Commissioner Jaeger. Uh, my name is David Engel, I'm the Planning and Economic Growth Director. And as a planner, we don't just take snapshots in time, we do projections and forecasts of the future. And two weeks ago, Zillow issued a study showing a tremendous gap between the inflated costs of housing and salaries not keeping up. So our, our need for housing keeps growing organically, on top of the people that are moving in and the jobs are being created. And to support Marcy's discussion about the jobs we're creating here in the county, so we track in our office, the jobs creation incentive payments that go out the door for board-approved economic projects. And many of them, because they were approved just two or three years ago, are basically, the average wage is well below eighty percent of AMI, and those are, those are things that we should even incentivize, because we incentivize by average pay. Example, Gary Plastics, Gary Plastics, I believe, had about a hundred and twenty-five, a hundred and fifty incentivized jobs, but their payroll is five hundred and twenty-five. And, uh, the, the delta on that are people that can't afford to live here in Pasco. And our job creation, uh, our, our, our office of, um, Dr. Bellis's office, he, he's committed and has initiated three business surveys here in Pasco County. And the three drivers are available workforce, affordable housing, um, and traffic, and blight, and redevelopment, those are what our businesses are telling us they need to grow and be successful. So, to that end, we have, uh, big opportunities here. Affordable housing doesn't, doesn't have to be just, you know, a new singular development, whether it be apartments or townhouses, it can be many things. But the area that I think is the biggest opportunity is our west side of Pasco County, called the West Market area in the harbors. Because we have older neighborhoods, unfortunately, that are in decline, that were built in the nineteen-seventies. They were designed for people that were retiring, now the housing has been recycled through several homeownerships, and now there's people living there, because that's our affordable housing stock here in the county. The preponderance, preponderance of ownership is their landlords. Most of those units occupied off of US-19 in our older neighborhoods are renter-occupied. And using, you know, and, and I didn't have a lot of slides today, and a lot of granular discussion, because I wanted to give time for the board to give us some policy direction. But, um, this redevelopment area, we could use transect zoning, form-based zoning, do quadruplexes and different types of innovative techniques. And what that does is it elevates the property values, it also, um, creates, um, a proof of concept where, where these, uh, renter-occupied units, the landlords are selling land, there's consolidation. And it really economically upgrades the entire area, not only to the Rose County product, but also into our general fund. So, in the west side, we have, uh, we have the infrastructure, we have the best coverage for public transportation. Along US-19, we're going to redevelop that, we have activity centers where there'll be employment. So, we, we have a lot of opportunities to work in the US-19 area, in the peripheral neighborhoods, land values are less, and there's a lot of, a lot of lots that have been acquired through tax sale and other, you know, or county-owned, because people didn't pay their taxes. So I, I believe that if the board gave us that direction to move aggressively towards affordable housing, because not only the current need, but the growing need, um, I will come back with some land use and zoning recommendations. And that'll provide, um, the, 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 the resources for Marcy to apply her tools to fill that housing with people in need. And I, I just wanted to say, uh, when we talk about the need of eighty thousand or units of housing, right now, our, our employment pipeline is over a hundred and one thousand new jobs in the projects that are under design or the board has approved. Uh, those are, those are office, those are advanced manufacturing, and those type of activities, and they're going to be coming here. And, and just to show you the scale, now Moffitt has announced they're going to create fourteen thousand five hundred jobs at the Spiros project, but that's only their jobs. If, if you look at the totality of the Moffitt development and their business plan, there's going to be joint ventures, partnerships, other activities, there's going to be over thirty thousand jobs in there. And, you know, if you go over I-75 and 52, and all the other things, I mean, we even have job creation going on now in Commissioner Mariano's district, up in the, the Lakucha area, and down by the airport, we're going to have a tremendous need for housing in the future, and it has to be receptive for the workforce. Thank you.
Let me just add one thing to answer Commissioner Weyman's question. So yes, I definitely think that fee simple housing can be affordable. The problem we have today currently, and that's not usually for rent, that's for sale. The problem we have is that the market on its own is not necessarily resulting in an affordable townhome product, so, and I wish Mr. Lambert had given his story about his search for housing for his daughter, but, he went searching for a townhome or something, and he couldn't find anything less than three hundred thousand, is that right? Okay, so even our, our sort of highest-density, single-family or, or fee simple product, which is a townhome, is not necessarily affordable today. And I think that's the issue, is that there's kind of a misconception that townhomes and forty-foot lots are just automatically affordable. They're, they're not. And so, you probably need something like inclusionary zoning or linkage fees to encourage developers to at least provide some percentage of their townhomes, or their forty-foot lots, or whatever the smaller product is, to be truly affordable. Otherwise, Mr. Lambert's daughter still can't afford anything.
Um, I, I have some, I have some photos that I sent to Sonia, Sonia, just like the last five or six, not the ones I sent you earlier. Um, this is a project that David and I went to look at when we were in Cincinnati, this is a duplex. I was trying to find the one that's a quadruplex, it looks very similar to that. So, the, I think there's one door, uh, that's a quadruplex, there's four units in this. And, you know, right next door is a regular house. And then, and then next door to that's a townhouse, so, I mean, that's, that's very nicely fitting into a community. Um, I think there's a few more, I just, I just went online here and I put in duplex, and, and this came up, so, um, you know, a, a lot of our neighborhoods are regular neigh- regular neighborhoods, not rear-loaded, the kind that I like, walkable communities. What do you, what do you show me there? Oh, well, send, send that to Sonia. Um, and so, I think, I think it's really, it's not that difficult to ask our builders that, for every, that's another duplex. You know, just throw in a few duplexes in your single-family neighborhood, um, and, and, this is a triplex. There's three in this building, one, two, three. So, uh, you know, I'd, I'd love to talk with the building community about being, you know, seamlessly putting some of these houses in their neighborhoods.
Commissioner, in my opinion, you're not going to have any difficulty getting the builders to put more
Duplex.
duplexes, villas, quadruplexes, townhomes. But, I'm just telling you that currently, they're still selling them at, at prices that are probably not affordable to most of your employees.
Yeah.
I'm just being honest with you, they're...
There's a, that's, I think, six units, that's, that's six units, yeah. This was, uh, outside of Louisville. Yeah.
No, I do think that a duplex, or quadruplex, or townhome is more likely to become, be affordable. It's easier for them to get it to an affordable level, but currently, it's not happening. And that's why we have a deficit.
Well, I think we're going to have to pitch in on the cost, too. I think, um, I don't, and I don't know how we do that in a for-sale home, because it has to, if we're helping to subsidize a for-sale home, then how do we ensure that the, when the person who got that benefit, when they go to sell, that it goes to someone that also is income-restricted? So then we need a land trust, or...
So Marcy's team is very good at this, they have mortgages, or deed restrictions, or land use restriction agreements.
But we don't have a land trust in Pasco County.
I don't know if we have a land trust, but we've done plenty of projects where we've restricted their affordability for a period of time, and if they don't sell it at an affordable price, they have to basically repay us that subsidy, so...
You've done that?
Yeah.
So there's tools in place to ensure long-term affordability, but we just have to put them in place.
And there's also funding tools as well. Uh, for redevelopments, since you're trying to elevate the property values in an area that's depressed...
So there, there are many tools, and for redevelopment, if you're trying to redevelop and revitalize an area that's depressed, and use affordable housing as one of the mechanisms, you can, you can establish a TIF, and as the property values elevate, um, so the, the general fund's getting more money, and you can take some of the increment of rising property values and recycle it back into affordable housing. So there's a number of self-sustaining financial mechanisms you can use.
Yeah, and we saw models of those at our conference, yeah.
I think Commissioner Weyman has a question.
Thanks, Chair.
I said Jack was next.
I got it correct, yeah. About Sam, but anyway.
What's that crackling? Where's your little...
I didn't touch it. Listen. Caused an issue over there.
No, you're done.
He can't talk right now, go ahead, Weyman.
Now we're getting extreme.
Well, uh, I talked to J.J. Murphy about this, and I've talked to Car, I'm pretty sure I talked to Car Ball, but what about the, have, have we done any further exploration on, if you, or if you're, at least on the public employee side, since we're using them as an example, the, uh, impact fee credits, and to have that, the formula set to whatever it needs to be, to where that, they wouldn't have PMI? Recall us all about that, Mike?
If you recall that conversation, I'm trying to...
And J.D., where his past life, I talked with him about it first, and they actually did this.
Commissioner, we are, uh, meeting, I think, uh, later this week or next week, uh, with HR, to talk about, employee incentives in the future for corrections, and, uh, I think that was going to be a topic that was going to be discussed. Looking at ways to get our employees to live here in Pasco County. Especially, our correction officers were listed, you know, on the list there.
Yeah, the basic, the basic crux of the conversation was, and this is just another piece of the, this story that we're talking about today, was, as long as the public sector employee, you know, they want to build a home and live in Pasco, they receive a certain level of impact fee credit over time, and if they were to move or sell, then obviously it would end. But the formula be set to where they wouldn't have to be paying that hundred fifty, two hundred dollars in PMI, or whatever it would be, uh, on their mortgage, which would also be a savings, so...
So, I can address the impact fee part of that, because what you did last year already allows us to waive the impact fees if it's below eighty percent of AMI, which is most of what our employees need. So, but, the mortgage part of it is not something we typically handle through impact fees, I don't know...
No, I, I think what, what, what the Commissioner was striving at is, you know, the impact fees are a significant portion of, of, of the cost of a, of a new home, for example. And so, is there a way, for example, a, a program is really what, what was being suggested, to kind of help buy down, uh, the down payment? I mean, it's really tent amount of down payment type assistance, to where you get it, uh, to a certain level, they wouldn't have to pay a PMI insurance, right, which could be a couple hundred bucks a month, depending on, depending on the mortgage. So it, it would be, it would be an employee benefit, is really what it would be, so, there is a cost associated to doing that, it would have to come from probably general revenue, or, or somewhere else, but, it's, it's an idea that's being floated around as, as an incentive to attract and retain a workforce, but also to encourage a homeownership. So, it's something that's getting vetted, as Mr. Murphy had pointed out.
I think Marcy has something to add.
Yes, so, so we do have a down payment assistance program, uh, with our ship money, and we could help people that earn up to a hundred twenty percent of the median income. And, is it thirty-five, fifty, twenty-five thousand dollars for the higher income? Twenty-five, thirty-five, or fifty thousand, and that can also be paired with the state's hometown heroes down payment assistance. So, there could be considerable, considerable amount of down payment assistance going to people who earn a hundred and twenty percent or less of the median income.
Okay, uh, Mr. Mariano?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. You know, there's a bunch of different things, as far as that can be done. We've approved a lot of apartments, and just blanket them coming in, they kind of build what they want to build. We've never pushed the buttons to say, I want to see a bunch of one-bedrooms, I want to see a bunch of affordables, I want to see a bunch of under the eighty percent AMI. So I think that's an opportunity we've got, and we should be implementing for the future. As far as duplexes in neighborhoods, I think it works great. Uh, duplexes even for new neighborhoods could work well. The benefit is someone who can afford a duplex is you can, they can buy the duplex, they can rent out part of it, live in part of it. That can be part of your thing, if you want to tie into ownership, to get an extra discount of some sort. Uh, townhomes, same type of way. Uh, I think the ADUs are a big benefit that's going to be, that can be out there. And you've got a lot of neighborhoods, you can go to several different neighborhoods on the, on the west side, that didn't fully get built out, so you have like one, one-offs, that'll just, simple lots that are sitting in. I know Sea Pines is probably about ten or fifteen, uh, there's a place up across Sea Pines, a nice little waterfront community. The homes aren't just, are just sitting, I mean, land's just sitting there, not, not done. There's trailers everywhere, and frankly, I'm not a big fan of spending a lot of money on rebuilding a mobile home. I'd rather build something nicer, and if you want to go that way, give people a huge credit. You know, sometimes they talked about, you know, different improvements could be done, maybe you make those things, like tax-free for like fifteen years, if you put a single-family home in, and go along that way. We had one gentleman, who was a veteran, he was in the leisure lane, uh, Van Doren area, that he had a mobile home, he went to go improvement, by the time he started his demolition, which he got a permit for, he had to improve it more than fifty percent, the gentleman lost his home. Town and country, you can look at that whole area there, you had all those empty lots are sitting there. Instead of doing something on, on the one-offs, you know, there's potential they have to do some other things, but, I think that mobile home product, and even along the water, you get chances to improve that dramatically as well, from, from all that's there. And that'll make it a lot safer, because, you know, if that storm Ian had hit us direct, all those things are wiped out, you're starting over again anyway. So I mean, there's opportunities out there, and there's a lot of good discussion we have in here today, but we've got to keep an open mind to what can, what we can bring back for these solutions down the road.
Okay. Ms... Yes?
We wanted to wrap this up and bring this all under one roof.
Okay.
So, as David had mentioned, rent and home prices are increasing, and wages have not kept pace. Florida is a hotspot. We've got population coming like mad, and we all want to see, um, have a healthy county where everybody can afford to live, work, and play. So to wrap this up, what direction would you like to go in, are we missing anything? We heard about ADUs, we heard linkage fees.
If I could bring something up, um, this has been brought up at my last two A-hack meetings, Advisory, Affordable Housing Advisory Council, um, that AD, that affordable housing is supposed to be fast-tracked through per- the permitting process. And, um, and they say that's one of the best, um, ways to help with affordability. I know that Habitat has had one heck of a time trying to build, get their development going over here across the street with, I don't know, what is it, seventeen units? I mean, we have some rules that prevented them from, um, moving forward, that didn't make any sense when they're trying to build uh, the little community that they were, like, um, subdivision stuff, and, I mean, we really have put a lot of impediments in their way, and they don't have that in any other county but ours. So, um, in the regulatory process, I think we should sit and meet and see what we can do to streamline affordable housing, because we, we can't make it so expensive for them in the development process.
J.J., I'm sure you took notes, JP, I'm sure you took notes on that one. Okay, what else?
Am I missing anything from our A-hack?
Well, ADUs, I, I like, because it gives people more flexibility to do something with their property, that's just a general statement, so I think that's, that's something that's, that's a little hanging fruit. As far as the, the mandatory commitment piece, and the linkage fees, and they apply to residential, non-residential, mixed use, I need more time to be educated on what this means, because on face value, I'm currently not comfortable with it. But that's just because it's new. So, um, not saying I disagree with it, I just want staff to help me understand... So, I'm not saying I disagree with it, I just want staff to help me understand what this, what these inclusionary zoning and linkage fees slide mean.
David, that's what the study will show. I mean, you're going to want to comment on that.
Yeah, so the study that Florida Housing Coalition would be doing would get into the details of that. But before anything like that could ever be adopted, we'd be having to sit down with you and explain to you exactly how it would work.
Oh, yeah, I'm okay.
And the board has discretion about how stringent that is. I mean, the fee in wiregrass, my recollection, it was like $100 a unit. I mean, we weren't talking about a huge amount of money. I'm not saying that we're going to end up there, but I think anything that we do will help Marcy get the kind of affordable housing that we need. So, I think you're going to, even if we move in that direction, you're going to have plenty of options about how strong a program you decide to do. We're happily happy to sit down with you and go over those details.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
I want to explore what some of the other counties are doing. I know that Palm Beach County has a requirement that if there's so many houses being built in a development that X amount has to be workforce housing. And it's a sliding scale, and they figured out how to make it work. And I think there's some other counties that are doing that as well. So, of course, I want to talk to our development community. But I've talked to Metro about this, when I told them what we were trying to do at our Blueberry Farm, they were all about seeing how they could participate. So, I don't, you know, some may resist, some may not, but let's get those dialogues going, see, because this is a problem that's going to affect all of us, and we're just going to all have to work together, and we have money. And so, we need to get innovative and creative.
Mr. Mariano?
I do think Commissioner Stark brought in someone trying to build an ADU on their property, a three-acre lot, five-acre lot. I've got people in my district that want to build, with lots of five or 10 acres.
Right.
They want their family to move in with them, not in the same building, but on the same property.
Yeah.
And right now, the rules we have in place are just terrible to try to make that happen. So, I know we're working to change some of that right now, but I want to say, as far as like, we saw the last hearing we had up in Hudson, how we had really kind of worked to make sure it was safe for the kids to get there. I'd rather take off the development pressure of having these big home builders coming in that are going to really disrupt the whole infrastructure there, and let these families that own five acres, 10 acres, and just let them build in, as long as their, let's say, a home's on at least an acre property itself, make it easy to subdivide it, make it easy for that family to come in and stay there.
Yeah.
And that's a way to make affordable housing, because now you're taking away the land cost.
Yeah, I've heard of many cases where adults want their elderly parents to move in on the same property, one of them's passed, or both of them are unable to afford something else, or even rent, because rent's so high. But the fact of it is, if they could build that ADU product on their five acres, or their three acres, or two acres, a one-acre lot's a bigger lot than what most people realize it is. It's 210 by 210. There's a lot of room on a one-acre lot. And if you compare that to a 40-foot lot, you can see how much room there is on a one-acre lot, so.
There are, I have seen people, one of my friends who's a Realtor, he sold a house over there on Plath to a, actually, he's a Hollywood producer, I don't know what he's doing here. But he wanted to have space for his family to stay when they come visit from California, and the county would not let him put an ADU, or, you know, a pool house with a bedroom. And they said, for him to do that, and this is, if you're driving down Plath and you see that big gorgeous two-story, you know, Georgian house, it's that house. And they said if he wanted to add a guest house in the pool house he wanted to build, he would have to apply for, to be a subdivision. And what, I don't know your terms, but you have to go through plating like a subdivision. So, what the staff, what they ended up doing was saying, okay, if you build your little building over there, and you build a covered walkway that attaches your house to that house, now it's one house, and you're okay. So, you know, I've seen this in Aristida, too. We had people whose parents moved in, or elderly mom moved in, and they added on to their house, and it actually has a side door, but they weren't allowed to put a kitchen in there, because if you have another kitchen, then there's, you know, so impact. And that's kind of shooting ourselves in our foot, right? Well, it shouldn't be, you know, so you can't have your elderly people come in, and why do we care? So, I think we can work on those things, too.
David, do you know how long the linkage fee study would be?
I don't. Marcy, did they give us an estimate on how long for completion?
Just that information for the study just came back this morning. And I think that what we're going to do is phase it, that that's what they recommended, is take it in phases to make sure that we are covering every base. So, they did not give a timeframe, but I would imagine that our next step is to go into negotiations and ask which phase, you know, start probably the first two or three phases.
So, my prediction is that it's probably at least a year and a half process to do that. That's why I think we need to move on ADUs as soon as possible, because those are, that's a much faster, easier thing to tackle than the linkage fees in Arizona.
Thank you, Marcy, I got a question. I have a question for Marcy.
That's a direction, I believe.
Yeah, and I like that, because I'd like to do something ASAP. Could you explain to us what exactly a land trust is and how it works? And is that the same as a land bank? Are they the same things?
So, I will explain it in my terminology, but I'll look over to Dr. Strum, and if I really get her, she'll come through and save the day. So, and I will say that when I was in Burlington, Vermont, I worked with the Champlain Housing Trust, which is the largest land trust in the world. So, basically, a land trust is when the person owns the building, but the land underneath it is part of the trust. And if it's homeownership, and they're not all homeownership, but this one, in most cases, it's homeownership, then their, the appreciating value is limited. So, it's not like in a regular market where you can buy a house, you know, I bought a house six years ago in Newport Ritchie for X number of dollars, and now it's doubled in value, and I could go ahead and sell it for that. You can't do that in a land trust. Now, you brought up the fact that we don't have a land trust here, which is true. I actually was in Collier County when we started these conversations about land trusts with the Florida Housing Coalition, and one of the major problems was getting Fannie Mae and Freddie Mac to lend on land trusts, and they've since gotten over that hump. But there are models where rather than creating an organization that runs the land trust, like the slide was the Hannibal Trust, or, you know, in Burlington, it's the Champlain Housing Trust, you can actually create a model where the, each house is on its own kind of land trust with, with its, not with zoning, but with, now I'm forgetting the word for it, and I'm going to ask somebody in the back row of my team to say, no, a land use restricted, a LORA. And so, you don't have to create the whole structure of a whole other organization with an executive director, and, you know, staffing and everything like that, but you can, within the structure, there is a, there are models right here in Florida, and as a matter of fact, I think Pinellas County and some local, that just land trust the houses. The advantage to a land trust is, you know, to Commissioner Whitman's point, if we are invested in people becoming homeowners, and with the cost of housing being 330,000, 350,000, and up, okay? In order to make that affordable to somebody, we might have to put 50, 75, $100,000 in to make that affordable to that person. And then, five years from now, they could go and sell it, well, now, the next house, we have to now give 150,000 to make it affordable. Whereas, in a land trust or a land use restriction, that investment carries with the property. So, now I'm going to turn to, would you like to?
You just, I would just say that, that is basically, you know, eliminating some of the ability of individual owners to make a profit beyond a negotiated amount. And so, in some cases, you're allowed to get back, you know, a percentage increase every year, but the idea is that you're basically keeping pace with inflation. And so, you are accumulating equity, because you're paying off a mortgage, and so, you're taking equity out with you when you leave, but it's not that you're setting the new price-to-market rate. So, it's a way of making sure it remains affordable in perpetuity.
So, Professor, would that be based on like Consumer Price Index, or a certain segment of things?
So, that's all part of the agreements. I've seen different kinds of agreements where it may be based on Consumer Price Index, or it may be based on some other formula for appreciation. But so that, there are different models, and again, the Florida Housing Coalition is really good. They have a lot of guides for creating a community land trust. I'm also, I'm actually one of the board members on the newly-created Hillsborough County Community Land Trust, where they're creating it basically to putting their surplus land that they see as appropriate for affordable housing into that land trust, and then looking to develop it from there.
And that's what I was about to ask, and I had asked for our surplus land thing, and I don't think I ever got it, but is it, is that one of the reasons why we look at our surplus land to maybe put it into a land trust?
You could do that, but you could also, so the difference between a land trust and a land bank.
Oh.
So, land banking is basically putting your land aside in a bank, just like you would put your money aside, so you're putting land aside to say that at some future date, you're going to use it for affordable housing.
And just so all the commissioners know, and maybe you don't remember, and for you, I worked with the Pasco County School District and asked them if they had any surplus land, and they came up with those 13 acres next to Anclot High School. And so, that is where that Dominion family, 60% AMI project is going, 224 units, I think. But the county, the school district sold that land to Dominion, but at a good price.
Okay. We've got to end our meeting.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thanks for your. Mr. Cabala, you have direction?
I think we're good. Accessory dwelling units, we'll get back to you where the linkage fee study is going to be in terms of time.
How much time do you need to come back to us?
I'll have to defer to the team here. I haven't seen the information. How much time for linkage fee study? ADUs, we can begin immediately, I suppose. It's a land development code change.
I'd say ADUs, we probably could bring back to you in the next six months or less. It's a fairly easy change.
That's ready to go? I mean
I'm not saying it's ready to go, I'm just saying that it's not difficult to prepare and get to, get through this process.
It's just the process.
But any land development code amendment needs to go through at least three public hearings, so there's a little bit of time associated with that.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, just if they could, too, as far as the subdividing properties, to make that easier, and then as far as if we have an existing neighborhood that doesn't have HOA appropriate its rules about doing duplexes in residential areas, that we should take a look at allowing those to come back to us as well.
Can you look at that at the same time?
We can, but as I mentioned earlier, duplexes and quadruplexes are a little more difficult than ADUs, only because
Okay.
Not every lot in the county is appropriate for a duplex or a quadruplex.
Possibly just give us an answer toward that.
But there are many that are.
Yeah.
There are many that are, but I'm just saying, ADUs, I think we probably could just do across the board, the whole county.
Yeah, I think ADUs would be good.
I don't know that we can do that with quadruplexes.
And we definitely need to do something, and I think ADUs
My preference would be we bring that back to you in two different stages, because I don't want to slow down ADUs because of quadruplexes and duplexes.
All right. Good. Meeting adjourned.